Hafte de todo Hamzu, thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. This virtual public hearing is convened by the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatnya Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, public hearing notices were given to all senators, stakeholders, and all main media broadcasting outlets. With the first notice being sent out on Friday, December 4th, 2020, the second notice being sent out on Friday, December 11th, 2020. The virtual public hearing notice was also posted at the Guam Legislature's website at www dot legislature, excuse me, dot guamlegislature dot org. Today is Monday, December 14th, 2020, and the time is now 8:07. This virtual confirmation hearing is now called to order. Seduz Maasi again for your virtual attendance at this morning's hearing. On the agenda for this morning's virtual confirmation hearing is the appointment of Joseph R. Menno Jr. to serve as a member as public representative on the COSIS Board of Advisors for the Guam Museum. The committee will receive oral testimony for E. Magahaga's nominee at this public hearing. For the viewing public's benefit, the committee will continue to accept written testimony that will be made a part of today's public hearing record. And we do have several pieces of written testimony already. So joining me this morning is the nominee, Mr. Joseph R. Menno himself. Seduz Maasi for your attendance, kind of bright and early this morning. Before the committee... Sorry. So let's go ahead and move on to going over some of our general rules of conduct for those who are virtually participating in today's virtual hearing. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including broadcasting from a quiet room with little to no interruptions. The use of virtual backgrounds is not permitted. All participants must broadcast from a room with adequate lighting, specifically to ensure that a participant's face is not backlit but visible at all times when speaking. When speaking, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. I will moderate this hearing by recognizing each participant. Right now, it's a participant level of two before presenting their oral testimony. And before speaking, please clearly state your name and title for record-keeping purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators who are present. Each panel member will pose one question and then, as needed, we will move on to subsequent rounds. Oral testimonies received shall be kept to the substance of the issues on the agenda. The personal inference as to the character of a nominee senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in the removal of that person from this virtual public hearing by the host. I ask that all participants keep their comments or testimony to within five minutes. There's just two of us, so we have a little bit of flexibility there. Hafte de... The Guam Museum officially named the Senator Antonio Tony M. Palomo Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility is a public facility under the Department of Chamorro Affairs. Within the Department of Chamorro Affairs organization exists a seven-member advisory board known as the COSIS Board of Advisors, which was established through Public Law 22-118 and placed under the Department of Chamorro Affairs by Public Law 25-69. The... Sorry, something moved around. The COSIS Board of Advisors is mandated to promote increased understanding of Guam's geology, biota, prehistory, history, and contemporary culture, overseeing the museum, and is the official repository and custodian of historical artifacts of Guam. COSIS is mandated to acquire, preserve, and make available for public viewing ancestral heritage and archival materials related to Guam's cultural, historical, and natural heritage. As a member of the COSIS Board of Advisors, a board member's work involves much volunteer time and commitment that provides an important link between the museum, the public, the legislature, and the governor. The COSIS Board of Advisors is unique in its purpose, mission, and role. It is essential that members be familiar with their board's governing statutes or other authorizing directives to understand its framework. I want to call upon Mr. Joseph R. Menno Jr. to provide his testimony to serve as the public member to the COSIS Board of Advisors for the Guam Museum. And then perhaps I will read portions of the written testimony we've received, about four written testimonies in favor of Mr. Menno. So with that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph R. Menno Jr. to provide his testimony and general comments to the committee. And if he could begin with stating his name and his position, if there is a title to state. Mr. Menno, please unmute your microphone and good morning.
Manana seduz, senadora, Marshaite no. Seduz Maasi, por estina tansani, maninetnu niit pagu na ogan para bai utestigo maiso para estina apuntu gi man gi hilo i tfinathe hin COSAS GUAHAN. Malago na bainoi undanglu na seduz maasi para imagahaga maamias lordis Leong Guero zani sekundo magalahi as Joshua Tenorio por esti makunta zu seduz maasi ni mangai konfianse gi ziguahu na babaifatazumi estina kapasidad. Good morning, Senator. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be here this morning to present. I would like to give thanks to our governor, Lordis Leong Guero, and our governor, Josh Tenorio, for this opportunity as the appointee to this board and their confidence in me to serve this board. Anai mafaisin zu za makunta zu gi estina kapasidad. Magufi kure sonhu, umaridosu zu na ta'utau sa'tsa moru zu ta'tau Guam. Trenta inwebi ani zu ta'tau inalahan na so'zu. Maguzu sa esti i kinahulohu imakoxain na gininasna na'ubia zan tata'ubiun. Mafagnu'i'u zu za mafagnogu'izu itaimanu posisyon itautauta itautautsa moro. Pues, matupagu sin'ora ni baba'i imalago'hu na baba'i no'itati para itano'hu sa ginin'estiu za i kinahulohu maguzu na baba'i hu fatutui zan esti i imangehilo i saninadahin COSAS GUAHAN, the COSAS itano'board. Sen maguzu, senadora, ni estina tansan za kumanmakunfitmahu gi ginini 35 na lehazlaturen GUAHAN, specialmenti para hangu gi hilo, senadora Marshaite no. Unoi zu estina tansani babaifatazumi uprometi'u na baba'i ufatutui za dalalaki ipumalu xiana board members ni para ta protehi. Sa megana bi'ahi ta'uhumu na masasa na kumeke matay senio mata ikuturanguahan pa'i lingwahi. Za gaigiu pagu na'ora na babisangania na lalalaha i kuturata, lalalaha i lingwahita tsamoro. Za debi za iputanti na para ta defendi za ta protehi esti na kultura sa ginini manaynata. Za ta'za mas za mon para hansi para iman mamaila xiana generacion, the upcoming generation. Debina para ta'gnu'i za ta'gnogui itaimanu hit na ta'utau'uis itautautsa moro. Pues, un bi'ahi talu senadora Marshaite no una'io undanglu na seduz maasi por estina tansani i maninetnu niit pagu na ogan para ta diskusesti na posisyon. Seduz Maasi.
Seduz Maasi for your testimony. And I am going to read a few excerpts from the testimony we received. It's very important to hear this kind of written testimony that's in support because, of course, we want members that are going to be well-versed in the field that they're representing. And I was very assured by the testimony. And I just want to mention that, you know, we've had discussions here and there throughout the last year or so. And I've always, it's always come across to me, your passion for the culture, for the language, for promoting it, and for safeguarding it. And for those that haven't necessarily looked at some of the terminology, I want to mention it a little bit. And I think that you'll understand what I'm discussing here is that there's protection, which of course is important. And there's also this concept of safeguarding. And safeguarding, it's more comprehensive in a lot of ways. And I really have felt throughout the time that we've gotten to discuss these kind of issues and in reading through your testimony, that you understand that more holistic approach. And it's really about safeguarding. It's promoting, maintaining, and figuring out all of these ways that go even beyond just protection. And like I said, I have felt that from you in our interactions. And I do want to mention that I do have a little bit of connection with In'alahan. So I was very pleased to see that too from the village of In'alahan. I went to In'alahan Junior High when it was a junior high back in the day. I think it was a pretty new school, actually. And then my uncle and aunt taught down in In'alahan for a period of time as well. And so it's always been a special village, not just to me, but I think to the entire community for precisely some of the reasons that you're nominated is because it's one of the villages that is recognized as kind of this keeper of history and the culture. I remember Saina Judy Flores mentioning that when she was growing up, that she heard people singing Kenton Tamarita as she was walking down the street. And I think not many of us have an experience like that. And so it just speaks to some of the nuances that are part of daily life down at In'alahan or have been over time. And the fact that Ge'pagu is there and it's a historic district, there are a lot of these indicators, speaking to the fact that the people of In'alahan have grown up in many ways treasuring their history and culture and representing it and sharing it with the rest of the island. And that's some of what came through in the testimony is that I think one of the most important things to me was hearing that you cared for your grandparents because that transmission is so important. We can learn a lot through books and through academia and so forth. But when it comes to culture and the language and life ways, there's probably nothing stronger than hearing it from and seeing it being acted out by one's own parents and grandparents. And so before I move on to other parts, can you speak to that, Mr. Menno? The relationship that you had with your grandparents is, did you ask them about culture and life ways? And do you recognize, was there any difference in learning to speak Chamorro as a first language? And whether you find that has helped you in, you know, the work to do with saving the language and speaking it in a way that can also then be transmitted to others? I'd like to give you a few minutes to speak about some of that and how that has informed you as somebody who could serve well on this board.
Seduz Maasi, senadora. You know, as I shared earlier, I was raised by my grandparents, my maternal grandparents. And so it became very natural for me. My grandfather rarely spoke English at the home. He would always speak to us in Chamorro. So it became very natural for me to start learning the language. And for me, you know, looking back, because both my grandparents are both deceased now, my maternal grandparents, paternal grandparents are still living, Carmen and Vicente Menno from In'alahan. You know, so it... I don't think I ever recalled asking them to teach me about culture. It just came naturally. I watched both grandparents in their daily lives and how they shared raising their children. So it became very natural for me to learn the language and learn about the culture. I would oftentimes sit with my grandparents and speak to them about their experience in the war. You know, and they would share that. And so for me, that became very important for me to learn about who I am as a Chamorro, to learn about my culture. As you said, you know, the importance of not only protecting but defending our culture, who we are as a Chamorro people. And as you said earlier, we can, you know, study. They can provide so many books about what it means to be Chamorro. But I think for me, the important part is how we live our lives as Chamorro people. Usangan gi finenena gitinituhu na iputanti na para ta defendi za protehi esti na kultura para imanamaila na generacion, no, the upcoming generation. It's very important for me. Za utzotzu'ui todo inina seniahu i para bai hu protehi za baba'i hu fagnu'i za ufagnogui por ikuturanguahan za nilingwahinguahan itaimanu mafagnu'i'u zu za mafagnogu'izu ni i manaynahu. Gi i kinahulohu uhasu na sitata'ubi'u zan sinana'ubia. Ta'za namatsomazu ni baba'i hutumu i lingwahi pa'i kuturantsa moro. They never, my grandparents always encouraged me to learn about our Chamorro culture and about our language. Pues, i uhasu mb'ahi itihau za tetza ta'utau Na'ahan itihau nanankilizano za faisona lenya komalago'tumeza. Za i hiningekomi tetza para famala'an ta'za na ulii tetza para lahi. Lo afaisino lenya sigi mangi za babaifagnu'io hafte manu'tumeza. Pues, disti katotsi ani zu'tumeza para i komunita, no. At the age of 14, I became a tetza or a prayer leader. And it was by way of my aunt who encouraged me to become a tetza. You know, growing up, I've never seen a male tetza or a male prayer leader. So it became very shocking for me when she asked me to tag along with her and learn, you know, the ways of tetza. Pues, pagu gaigiu pagu gi i kapasidatu. Usangan na 30 ani zu za anuhasu'tati na'manman. Na'manman para guahu za na'maguf para guahu sa'tsamoru zu. Za gaipau masen xapagu para guahu anu'atan'tati i direksion ginini manaynahu sa mafagnogu'izu za makula itsalonhu baba'i tati'zi zani hafte manu itinengoku'u por tsamoru. Pues, magai'nu'hu senoi undanglu na seduz maasi para todo i dos manaynahu i difuntua susidifuntas mari mantanotnia zan i sitata'ubi'u si vicente zan sinana'ubia Carmen Menno. Unoi sa gininsia mon na posible esti i kapasidatu pagu za hansi zu na ta'utau i maguf na'maguf zan usangan gi gitinitu na bu manidosu zu na ta'utau por esti na regalo. Seduz Maasi.
Seduz Maasi for that. And, you know, through the written testimony and through what you just shared, those things are very extraordinary, I think. Those aspects of yourself, and they're exactly the kind of qualities that we need as a member of the COSIS Advisory Board that's helping guide the museum in the activities that it does, but also in the displays that it has and how the material is displayed. These are all, you know, they may seem very straightforward, but they're all very particular types of arts, really. You know, the types of activities can make a large difference that a museum does, the way that it conducts its outreach and so forth. And so we do need people who are well-versed, who grew up in as much as possible the culture and the language and the life ways itself or who have really studied them, as some of the board members have done. They've made it their academic career. And so having this mixture on the board is really important, I think. So I just want to mention, we maybe won't have time to go through much of the testimony, but I just want to summarize it. And we've heard from Simeon Palomo, whose father is, after the museum is named, I didn't say that quite well, but you know, the museum is named after his father. And this is because, again, as with your family, his family is known. And he himself, as a product of that family, are known for studying the culture and being these safeguarders, these defenders of the culture. And so that came through very loud and clear. And being a tetza at the age of 14, I have to think that that's unusual. But it speaks to your extraordinary character and people recognizing that. And the fact that you learned it through family, it really, again, helps us understand the type of atmosphere that you grew up with and the learning that you did all along the way. And so if I just summarize the testimony, it's about the strength of your character, the commitment that you have to the culture, the language, and not only commitment to it, but the true living of it. I've had to tell others before that, as I've gotten older, I get very sentimental about these things. So I think that those, again, are just so important. To study it is one thing, to grow it up is another, that's important as well. But to have been known all your adult life for exhibiting it is another important quality. So with that, to collect myself, I will move on to just a couple of quick questions. So we just want to make sure that with anybody who becomes a member of any board, that they understand the time commitment and will dedicate themselves to it. We've had a problem over the years of people not being able to make the time and then not being able to make quorum, and then the board is not able to move forward. So both the time commitment, if you're ready to dedicate yourself to that and understand it, and also if you see any conflict of interest, something to do with family or something else that is considered a conflict of interest in any way, if you will work towards recognizing that and then recusing yourself from those types of decisions. If you could just briefly speak to those, Mr. Menno?
Seduz Maasi, senadora. Hunggen u'ugos kompendi i se'zu ni para tanaholum gi estina kapasidad, no, za hunggen u'ugos kompendi senadora za uprometi'na kuman manoi zu estina tansani baba'i holum gi estina kapasidad bai hu prometi'u na bai dalalaki pumalu xiana board members za bai ufatutui. Bulan atotu'pa'tato'vi, no, i specialmenti para i Guam Museum. Za hunggen u'ukompendi i ilekmu na kuman guaha disintrisau, no, if there's, right now, nothing impedes me to be involved with this board. I understand the involvement with the lot of time and work that will be put into this board. And given the chance by this legislature, I will commit myself to this board. Ileku gitinitu na magufi kure sonhu na manapuntu sa para guahu iputanti esti na kawsa, no. This is very important to me, and I hold this close to my heart, the preservation of our culture and our language. Guaha un ta'utau ni i, there's someone that's very close to me, our newly elected mayor of In'arahan. And there's a saying that he said to us is that he wants to give back to his community. And that really struck with me. And so para guahu lo'quit malago'hu na bai no'itati para i komunita itano'hu, specialmenti itano'hu, para i kultura zan i lingwahi. Zan ipumalu xiana mangai gi gi board i mangi hilo i saninadahin i COSAS GUAHAN. Pues, ta'za mas malago'hu i bai hu fatutui esti gi kapasidad.
Seduz Maasi for those reassurances. And from everything that I've read and every encounter that we've had, that I've seen, when you commit yourself to something, you carry it out to the fullest of your ability. And people mention that over and over. And that will be a great asset, all of the characteristics that you have. But the commitment as well will be a great asset to the COSIS Board. And you do have my support. This is why, even though our session ends tomorrow and we vote on the 17th, we are going to do our best to get this committee report in so that we can hopefully confirm you on the 17th. And you can start a new year with this new commitment for the people of Guam. So with that and those reassurances and the testimony that will be attached to the committee report so that all senators can read through it and everybody in the general public can read through it as well to see those same assurances and support. We've completed the discussions from the committee and the panel. This concludes the confirmation hearing for Mr. Joseph R. Menno Jr. to serve as the public member to the COSIS Board of Advisors Guam Museum. The committee will continue to receive written testimonies for the next few days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Hagatni Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs. Written testimonies may be submitted by email to office.senatorkelly@guamlegislature.org or physically at the Guam Congress Building. And as I was reading through my committee oversight, just to make it clear how I've gotten to meet you in a variety of ways, but you do work for the Hagatni Revitalization authority and that's some of how we've had our interactions, interactions. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Sidois Maasi for your attendance and participation in today's virtual confirmation public hearing. Today's virtual hearing is now adjourned. Sidois Maasi for your attendance and participation in today's virtual public hearing. The time is now eight thirty-six. Have a good rest of your morning and happy holidays to you, Mr. Menno, and to everyone.
Sidois Maasi, Senadora. Para hangu loquim zan itu musta. Sidois Maasi.